Hello, everyone. I dashed out real quick and stood in the sun.
It was hard to come back. I'm just saying.
I can totally relate. Okay, so there's Commissioner Phi as well. So why don't we just, do we have a lawyer? No, no lawyer yet. Oh, there's Alan.
Yep, you are all ready to go, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, so welcome back to the work session of Tuesday afternoon, March 2nd, 2021. So far, it's 3:16 in the afternoon. I'm hoping Commissioner Rogers will join us soon. Otherwise, this is the voice of Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined with Commissioner Jerry Willey, Commissioner Pam Trees, and Commissioner Nafisa Phi. We'll pick back up with topic number three, discussion of candidates for the West Slope Advisory Board. There's Lisa Tattersall. Good to see you. Take it away, Lisa.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Lisa Tattersall, manager of Washington County Cooperative Library Services, also known as WCCLS. I'm here today to review applications for the West Slope Library Advisory Board with you. WCCLS operates one public library in the county, the West Slope Community Library, and their advisory board's main purpose is to champion the library and the community, support inclusion and access to library resources for all, and to provide feedback to the West Slope Community Library Supervisor. Your Board of Commissioners appoints library advisory board members. There are three current members of the advisory board, and all of their terms expire on June 30th of this year. We have two vacant positions for which we have received three applications. After interviewing all applicants, staff recommends appointing all three of them, which would temporarily increase the membership of the advisory board to six. This would allow us to have some overlap between current and soon-to-be-expiring library board members, and will help us maintain some continuity. In addition, one of the applicants we got is a high school student, and we would really welcome the inclusion of a youth perspective on the board. So the three applications we received were from Kristin Ingram, Amelia Nason, and Lois Hayes. And so I'll just give you a quick overview of their perspective. Oh, there's a baby. That's lovely. So Ms. Ingram is interested in using her background as an attorney to help the library as we embark on foundational work of updating and writing new policies with a focus on equity, diversity, and inclusion. She knows how hard COVID has hit members of the community, struggling with isolation, housing insecurity, and more. We got a sense from the interviews with her that she really knows the library as a resource for the members, and so she's looking to give back to the community by supporting the library's work. Amelia Nason is a high school student who has been an active user of West Slope Library her entire life, and would bring a really valuable perspective to the board about how to help reach more of her peers. She has a passion for books and the library. What she hopes to do is become an ambassador for youth and the library in her community. She is really proud. Her generation is focused and actively engaging in social justice and equity work to improve the world around them. And she had thoughtful suggestions in the interview on how to reach more youth, and she would be a really great asset on the board. The last applicant that we're recommending is Ms. Lois Hayes. She shares the library's mission of helping underserved communities, and she has been an ambassador for library services, especially for people in assisted living facilities. Her mother lives in an assisted living facility, and Ms. Hayes regularly helps connect residents there to the ebook service. So she's already spreading the good word about libraries wherever she goes, so we think she'd be great. So we believe all three of these applicants bring an excellent focus on equity and inclusion, and we're really excited about the generational diversity among the applicants. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the applicants and the library advisory board. I'm currently scheduled to return to you on March 16th with an action item, depending on the outcome of your conversation today. Thank you.
So I know with the location of this library, it is most oft-used by folks who live in Commissioner Tree's district as well as mine. Commissioner Tree, are there any misgivings you might have for this recommendation?
No, I read all of the applications very, very pleased and really happy about having a high school student on board. I think that's great. And with the rejuvenation of the West Slope Library, it's really exciting to have a bit of a new picture in relationship to that group as well. So, thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Commissioner.
I really appreciated the proactive nature of younger member youth of our community actually applying as opposed to seeing that we have a designated youth position. So I think all the better there. So unless other commissioners have any comments, I'll take it that we're all comfortable with moving forward with the slate to the next step. Okay, thank you for joining us, Lisa. Keep up the good work.
All right. Thanks so much. Thanks for your support.
Great. We'll then move on to topic number five, Budget Committee Member Recruitment. Hello, Mr. Liang.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I thank you for your time this afternoon. I am in front of you to present, recommend the candidates for the budget committees. It is that time of the year where we're recruiting budget committee members to assemble a full committee for the upcoming budget season that's coming to us. Out of the three budget committees that Washington County has, we have vacancies on two of the three this year. That is the Washington County and Service District for Lighting, number one, budget committee, as well as the North Bethany County Service District for Rose Budget Committee. And we'll use the member metrics to walk through each one of this, each one of this committee recruitments. And just in general, for both of these committees, we have applicants for the vacant positions. And in our recruitment process, we have incorporated three general areas of assessment when we interview with each one of the candidates. The first one is really the candidate's reason and the purpose of participating on the committee. The second area is their skill set, how does that help the committee's work? And then the third area that we assessed is the candidate's vision and their value on equity inclusion, equity, diversity, and inclusion, as well as how do they see the committee's work help advance the community's social equity at large? So those are the areas that we assess the candidates, and then we interviewed each one of the applicants that has turned in new applications this year, and then we refreshed any applicants that had previously applied that has been interviewed in previous years. But we'll start with the Washington County Budget Committee and Service District Lighting for Lighting, number one, budget committee. We have one vacancy on the committee this year with nine applicants in total. And then we have interviewed all of the candidates either this year or in a previous year. And the recommendation is Caesar Maldonado to be appointed to this committee for this one vacancy. And Caesar is a resident of Washington County District Two. He has a master's degree in economics, very well-versed with government work. He has previously served on the Beaverton's Human Rights Commission, and currently serves on the City of Beaverton's Budget Committee as well. Caesar also identifies as Hispanic. And among all the candidates, we feel that Caesar is a good fit for the committee to be appointed. After appointment of recommended applicant, the Washington County and the Service District for Lighting, number one, budget committee will have a community members demographic will be 60% BIPOC and 40% women. Is there any questions for this particular budget committee? All right, seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next one, which is the North.
Sorry, I had a question, but I did have a comment. I'm sorry. I was really pleased by the mix of applicants that you got. No, it's, there were some tough decision-making that went in, so I appreciated hearing the multiple factors that you used for making this recommendation to us. But we've definitely, I think, turned the tide in terms of having members throughout our community that are interested in serving. It's almost a shame to have to say, no, we don't have enough positions right now.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Yes.
Also, it's also helped me, while I can read the applications, it's helpful to me that you've included the applicant profiles, just those bullets. Make a big difference in terms of focusing me into who the applicants are. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I like that new information tool. Thank you, Commissioner Willie.
Well, yeah, Jack, if I could just, I was impressed too. I mean, the fact that we had so many applicants and we could only pick one is kind of depressing a little bit because we've always tried to go on out and solicit people to set on these positions, and then we can only appoint once. So I guess with that, I don't know if there are other budget committees or other committees that they might be interested in other than this. I'd just like us to keep them on the list and make sure we invite them to apply to other positions that would apply. So, yeah, let's keep this inventory of potential candidates strong.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, and thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioner Tree. Just a little additional information to your comments is throughout the interview process, just because that the budget committee usually is probably one of the most competitive committee in the county in term of our vacancies and the applicants, I usually kind of manage that expectation with the applicants from the gaggle during the interview process, and then I introduce all of the other opportunities, as well as the other two budget committees, as additional opportunities for the applicants. So those messages have been communicated to the applicants. Unfortunately, we are governed by ORS on the very specific structure of a budget committee, so we can only have five members, which is the equal number of members to the commissioners on the committee. So your point is very well taken, and those messages has been communicated to the applicants.
I would also encourage them to attend our Audit Committee meetings.
Yay, yes.
Hackers are cool.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I know, Commissioner Willie, I'm a geek. What could I say?
That's going to be a tough sell, is all I can say to you, okay? And just be careful. You could be identified as a bean counter if you're not careful, so.
Well, I always refer them as two, sorry, I always refer them as the two ends of the same process. Because budget is a planning and a goal-setting process. Carver is actually the demonstration of the goals being realized, so equally important. Thank you for your very nice comments. And if we can move on to the next committee, which is the North Bethany County Service District for Rose Budget Committee. This one, we have three vacancies this year, and that's one of the, that's the only one committee that we haven't achieved the staggering term for the members to have at least, to have at most two members expiring each year. So we're continuing to work on that. We have three vacancies this year and only three applicants that applied for this particular committee. Now, this one is obviously a particularly interest area as a set of budgets, so usually we have a smaller applicant pool for this particular budget committee. So the three applicants are Daniel Reed, Fu Hua Xu, and Matthew Brown. And out of the three, Daniel Reed is actually a re-application, applying for his second term on the budget committee. And because we have three vacancies, we recommend to appoint all three of them. And then Daniel Reed has actually agreed to be appointed to a shorter term just to help the county get to the staggering of two maximum expiration in each year. So with Daniel Reed appointed to a shorter term expiring in June of 2022, and Fu Hua Xu and Matthew Brown expiring in June of 2023, we would be able to have fairly manageable vacancies to work with every year. Because this year, we feel lucky and fortunate to have three applicants. Otherwise, we may be running with one vacancy into the budget season. With that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions on this budget committee. All right. Well, thank you very much for your support, and we will have an agenda, boards and commission agenda, back to the board meeting on March 16th for the formal appointment. And I will give the recommended candidates a heads-up so they can look out for that appointment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jack. Keep up the good work. Oh, you're back with us on another topic. You don't get to go away. Topic number six, gain share, financial update and policy discussion. Ms. Angie and Jack Liang.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I was going to say, Jack, don't go anywhere. You're not done. You're just getting started. That was a warm-up. So today's discussion is a review of the gain, just a gain share update. So where are we at? And an opportunity for the board to discuss the gain share policy and provide any input moving forward. So, Jack, I'll turn it over to you to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Tanya. If we can move to the next slide, please. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. So as Tanya explained, that the purpose of today's session is to discuss gain share. And then specifically, we want to really provide information to the Board of County Commissioners, and also to review with the county commissioners on the financial policy that surrounds the gain share as a part of the county's resources and the spending plan on the gain share. With, next slide, please. So we have a three-part agenda today. We will go through a little bit brief history of gain share, and then we'll talk about the gain share's distribution mechanisms. And then lastly, on the third part, we will talk about the county's gain share allocations, and then have a discussion on the county's gain share financial policy. Next slide, please. What, the next slide, please. We'll go over a little bit of a brief history, and some of you are already well-versed in this area. So please bear with me for just a few minutes about what is gain share and what kind of created it. So gain share is always, oftentimes commonly mistaken in the same part with SIP. These two resources are closely related, but not exactly the same. So we'll start with the SIP, which is a strategic investment program that was implemented by the state in 1993, which allows the local governments, like counties, to negotiate with businesses that actually create enough jobs and making enough investments in a local area. So that's a really high-level background of SIP. And then on the bottom part of this slide, you talk about gain share. So by 2007, that's when the state realized that by adding these companies and then creating all these jobs in the local area, there's a tremendous amount of pressure on the local governments and on the local government's service deliveries. So as part of the Senate Bill 954 that was passed is to restore the fairness between the state of Oregon and the local governments. And the fairness is basically coming from all these new jobs and the income tax that's collected by these jobs. And then essentially allows the county to have a share of that personal income tax. So Senate Bill, it grants eligible local governments a share of the personal income tax. And at the time of the bill of discussion, it was 50% that goes to the local government. Next slide, please. So after the bill is introduced, and then there were a couple of years where we were working on that 50% formula and receiving fundings. And for Washington County, you can see the number went from 11 million to close to 19 million, and then to close to 30 million, and then the number continued to grow. So in 2015, there was a Senate Bill 129. That's when the state realized that the growth of that gain share distribution were getting a little too high. And then they actually introduced another bill, Senate Bill 129, to limit the maximum distribution of any county for gain share distribution to 16 million in total. That's all the jurisdictions within Washington County, for example. And then implemented an ending of gain share distribution after July 15th, 2024. Next slide, please. All right, so that's the end of the brief history of the gain share. Any questions on the history, just for the benefit of the commission? All right, we'll move on. Next slide, please. So next, we'll talk a little bit about.
Sorry, I wasn't fast enough on the uptake.
Sorry. Go ahead, Chair Harrington.
2024 used to sound like a long time away. Here we are in 2021, deeply in the 2021 session. And it's a long session here in 2021. The next long session, it used to be that long sessions were the ones that dealt with big policy. And so the next long session is 2023. So by the fall of next year, we are going to have to think about what might we need to do to at least position renewal of gain share or whatever. So I just, I needed that to hear myself even walk through that, that 2024 really isn't as far away as I wish it was. So it's in my sightline. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Yes, that is definitely something that I had the previous discussion with our government relations managers, and we know that is on their radar as well to get into the legislative advocacy process. All right.
Hey, Jack, there is no legislation right now suggested to modify gain share this year, this session, is there?
Not that I'm aware of.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to the gain share distribution. So the gain share is supposed to be distributed in the same way as the community service fees under the SIP agreement, Strategic Investment Program. And then the SIP agreement usually have a very strict community service delivery, community service fees that is basically following the property tax rate distribution within overlapping jurisdictions to distribute that. And then within the county, we have a three SIP agreement that affects the gain share distribution. There's the Intel 2005 SIP, there's the Intel 2014 SIP, as well as the Genentech 2006 SIP. So there are those three SIP agreements. Next slide, please. So to use one example and explain like what's the county's share of that 16 million maximum to take the fiscal year 2021 numbers, as you can see, we received 16 million in total, and then that gets distributed to all the overlapping jurisdictions within Washington County on basically overlapping the SIP projects. And the Washington County's share out of that is about $9.2 million, and that is the county resources. Next slide, please. And this is a, you know, chart that illustrates the county's gain share revenue in history, starting from fiscal year 2012-13. And all the greens are actuals that we have received, and then all the blues are projections into the remainder of the four years that we have left on gain share revenue. As you can see, that besides the initial three years, that amount has significantly escalated. We have mostly stayed at the 9 million and some change area, and then there were some slight decreases in between. And those are triggered by expansion of some urban renewal areas, as well as new taxing jurisdictions being established, like the Tuolton Valley Water and Soil Conservation. Next slide, please.
Well, wasn't that that drop from 18 down to the 16 really because of the maximum distribution for any county for the whole set?
So the maximum distribution really affected us in the fiscal year 2015-16. I believe that's where the 16 million started to get distributed.
Yeah, so if you go back to slide eight, the legislation. Oh, not slide eight, sorry. Slide six.
Slide six.
Implemented a maximum distribution for any county at 16 million. So that means that the distribution for all of the line items is capped at 16 million.
Correct.
Which is where, given the table on slide nine, the county itself as one agency is at that 9-point-whatever-million.
Correct.
That's really where that level is set.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And then next slide.
I have a question on slide nine. Is this a good time to ask, or you want me to wait?
Absolutely. Stop me anytime.
So I see Washington County and City of Hillsboro, and the last I don't see is City of Beaverton.
Yes, and the reason it's the location of the SIP projects, so it's only distributed to the area where, for example, under the Intel SIP, it's only distributed under the area where the Intel project is located. So CDO Beaverton is not in that mix because they don't have any of that Intel property that's associated with the gain share distribution.
Jack, you might want to point out, at one point before the agreement that we all entered into, and I don't know if Jerry, if you were at the city at that point, but we negotiated that based upon a lot of back and forth with the legislature, more importantly, the governor's office. We were giving up a lot of tax revenue in our minds, and so it became specific. But we thought we'd set some aside for the school districts, and I remember Andy Dyke and I, we went to lease the districts in this area and handed out large checks to the Tuolton area and Sherwood and so forth. The disappointment was, is after the state had persuaded us that this was a great program, and it was to create a lot of economic development, they decided it was too rich. It's kind of like, I'm going to pay you a commission to do certain things, but when you start making a little bit of money, I don't like the commission I agreed to, so I'm going to cut it out. And so that's exactly why we dropped down to the 16. So all of a sudden, we didn't have the money that we previously had. We distributed around the county to the school districts and some of the special service districts. And so it became very site-specific, and I know Commissioner Willie can tell you in Hillsboro, I mean, that's where the projects are. And so they were losing the vast amount of the.
Yep.
Absolutely. Thank you for that addition, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, and Jack, just to add on to that, you know, if you go back to slide eight, and it talks about the SIP agreements that affects the gain share distribution. It was in, I believe it was in 1415 when we were negotiating. The last SIP transaction that we did was for $100 billion, primarily for Intel. So that last SIP agreement is huge, and it's by that design. It was, there was concerns about the SIP was going to be nevermore, which is an interesting thing because if you look at the gain share and you look at the SIP contracts, those have been hugely successful, and still, for some reason, they come under attack by the legislature as corporate giveaways. So I get both sides of that argument, but they are very, very successful, and they have proven to be very beneficial for the state of Oregon, as well as Washington County and certainly the city of Hillsboro. So it's a little frustrating to have that conversation and then have all the pushback. But we digress, we can move on, and hopefully we can sustain these. If I do remember, though, what moved the gain share into the crosshairs of legislative attention was that instead of the $29 million or whatever the last number was there, that was going to go to somewhere close to 75 or 80 million was what was projected. And so that certainly was not feasible for the state either. So that's how we ended up here, a very successful program.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner Willie, for your addition. So next part of our agenda, we'll talk a little bit about the county's internal allocations. Is once we take that $9.2 million revenue, how did we allocate that throughout the history, which is a short history, but still a history of the gain share. Next slide. We're actually on the right slide, so thank you. So the gain share historical allocation, so throughout all the years between the fiscal years 2012-13 to fiscal year 2020-21, within the county, our internal cost, we have the seven categories that we spend money in. Obviously, from larger to smaller, we have the facility projects, the transportation projects, the forfeit and credit debt service, the ITS projects, and then we have a clean air programs, event center capital, and the small projects that the county supported, those seven categories. Next slide, please. So within the facilities, capital, and debt service projects, we included a really large number of projects, and those are generally fall into three general categories. The first category is the seismic upgrades, including the public service building, including the law enforcement center, as well as there's a project pending for Warner Street Building, which we still have some residual funding for that particular project. And then we have improvements to existing facilities, including the jail space and security improvements, including the Haglake Road improvements. And then we also have some, added some additional facilities to increase the county's space, and that includes Adams Crossing acquisition, the Public Service Annex acquisition, as well as Public Safety Training Center. I wanted to clarify that gain share is a one. I wanted to clarify that Gensher is one of one of a few funding sources for many of these projects. It's in some of these areas is not the entire funding source for this project. Next slide, please. And then we have a transportation projects, which is primarily in three project areas, the bicycle pedestrian projects. As well as the school access improvement, also known as the safe route to school projects. And then we have the traffic management and congestion mitigation projects. And also we have I T S projects that's in there in the mix. And the four bullet points that's listed in there is really the majority of the categories that was invested in I T S. The number one thing that we invested in is assessment and taxation system implementation. And then we have the major network infrastructure system upgrades, as well as the major telecommunications system upgrades. And then we also have a various general fund department projects that has some smaller dollar amounts that was supported by Gensher Resources. Next slide, please. So this slide shows a pie chart that includes all the small projects that the county has supported. And most of this are one time in nature, some of this overlapped into a couple of different years. But then they're still kind of temporary and short term in nature. And I want to say by now, looking into the next few years, now of these projects are still ongoing. So this have all concluded. So this project includes Community Housing Fund, Community Action, Virginia Garcia, Washington County Historical Society. City of Banks Library, as well as Aloha Library. So those are some small projects that Gensher has supported. Next slide, please. So now let's talk a little bit about the future allocation. And the future allocation, what we're talking about is limited to the next four years, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty one twenty two. To fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty five. And I wanted to say that this is tentative plan because this is a really kind of future allocation based on past allocations. That's prepared by staff. Obviously, that's the purpose, that's a big purpose for today's discussion is to kind of get your board's. Feedback on the future financial allocations of Gensher, and if you still feel comfortable with this. This usually in the past, the communication to the board is usually on an annual basis, included in the budget document as part of the Gensher fund. But then that doesn't have a multi-year look. Usually it's just one year in front of you. So just for the current plan as continuing. Continuing our current. Future spending plan, we have a forfeit and credit debt service of twenty two point eight million. We have a transportation project for ten point four million, and then we have four million dollars in the I T S project. Now, I made a mistake not having the most current chart for that one point five million dollars event center operation reserve. That's actually for fiscal year twenty twenty one, not for fiscal year twenty one twenty two. So we had a little bit version control issue in there. Please forgive me and ignore the one point five million dollars. And then we have allocated amount of two point one nine five million that is really untacked for anything that's in the project. So that is our current.
I'd like to pause here and give the board a little bit of background. I really. Was a precipitating force for saying, look, we need to have the opportunity of a board discussion. It's our decisions, it's our direction to the C A O if we want to continue on the same path or not. I will admit, I on multiple occasions have made the mistake of. The I T S is the information technology services and not intelligent traffic control systems. So just kind of a fun thing there. On the transportation projects, those, you know, going back to the list, bike, ped. School access improvement, safe routes to school and the traffic management and congestion mitigation. Now, what the reason why I'm spending a moment on this is because gain share revenue is discretionary revenue. And we are dealing with. A budget where we have a lot of revenue cuts coming from the state as well as. The cost impacts for maintaining our own staff and service levels across the organization. So I'm I'm not personally as one of five. I'm not convinced that it's an automatic decision to keep investing these discretionary dollars into the same categories. Because when we're faced with decisions to cut staff. And it's not just about cutting staff, it's about impacting direct lives here in Washington County. Like potential community corrections cuts. Or other, you know, mental health services cuts, things of that nature due to to. Or sexual developmental and disability cuts because of reductions of state revenue. I'm not comfortable in just saying, well, let's keep moving ahead carte blanche with what we did in the past. So that's one reason why I wanted to have this information eyes wide open and ensure that. We have the opportunity to discuss direction to the C A O for the proposed budget. As well as keep our options open as we go from proposed budget to budget adoption. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Next slide actually give us a table that shows the next couple of years. According to plan of following the precedents, what the Gensher financial what looks like. As you can see, that we're anticipating projecting nine point two million dollars revenue coming in, still projecting a little bit of interest earning. As you all know, that we're in a very low interest market right now. And then the full face and credit debt service is four point nine million dollars each year. And then jumps to seven point nine million dollars for the last year of Gensher obligation for that part of the funding. And then we have a one million dollars for I T S capital. Building the plan as well as two point six million dollars in road capital, which is transportation projects. Building to the plan with ending fund balance at the end of the program of two point one nine million dollars that's allocated. So this is actually the last slide before the question slide, and I would be happy to receive any feedbacks from the board. On the future directions of Gensher financial policy and any of your feedback on the current plan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Oh, am I still off? I thought I was on mute, but I'm happy to comment. I I guess I've had the privilege, and I call it that, of negotiating the very first one on behalf of the county and the very last ones. I've been here throughout the program, and I've seen lots of iterations, I've seen lots of pushback. First, from us a bit on the state saying, why are we giving up the revenues in acquiescing to governor's requests? And been more than one governor, obviously, during that period of time. To the last go around where we were chastised by members of our own delegation. And I saw articles that happened to got him in possession. Of people who are our center representatives, saying the schools in the in the rest of state. Gain share in our county is hurting them, and it ought to be eliminated. There ought to be problems. And so this has been a very slippery slope, and so we need to be very careful if we start saying, well, it needs to be. Social services, there's no reason for them to give us any money. They should just go ahead and pass, take the money back and say that's a part of the state function. What we have been saying all this time is that because we've given up revenues locally. That if we make capital investments, if we do things that benefit the affected areas, for instance, in Hillsboro. The the road system had to be improved, but we've been able to extend it throughout the county. We said that, and you didn't show it, Jack, with some of the wingspan money, that was Bob Terry and. Andy Dyke both pushed for some of this money to go there, and so I'm not sure why it's not showing up, but they were. They wanted some of his gain share for economic development on that project.
It did show up.
Where?
And there's prior slides.
Yeah, back on slide twelve, there was actually the event center capital that was in there. And then also there's a part of.
The two point three, okay.
Right, there's two point three, and also part of the forfeit and credit was also event center as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, they bonded it for the event center construction. It's all in there.
Yeah, well, thank you for pointing that out, but the I'd be very, very concerned with trying to continue. To receive, you know, this kind of money from the state legislature, and they're cutting as well. And saying, we want to spend it on our local programs versus reinforcing, as you pointed out, we reinforce the. Building, once we get back in it that we're in, I mean, we've we've spent on projects that were brick and mortar that we could point to. And say, that's what it did, and we needed to do that to keep these prosperity going in this county, so. More to come, I guess, but we can have that that argument. It's going to be very difficult, I think, to make a straight faced argument why we continue to receive gain share.
Commissioner Willie, go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow along behind some of the things Roy was saying, I know that. The city of Hillsboro, our focus was when that gain share money started flowing through and it became more and more significant. That our purpose was, we knew that at some point in time, we were going to have to point back. And say, that is where we spent the money. Much, not just bricks and mortar, but but things that benefit the certainly the city of Hillsboro, but the county overall. And and certainly our constituents, and so we didn't plug it back into the general fund as. A backfill, I guess. So I I can, I I get that, I understand that. And looking at this, this slide on seventeen is, to me, is much better than the previous one. Because the previous one lumped it all together and and they were big dollars, and so. They still are, but when you break it down in years like this, it looks more, I guess. Feasible. So. The full faith and credit debt service of four point nine million dollars a year, and then it goes out into twenty four twenty five, and it's almost eight million dollars. Jack, what is that? That's not just the event center, that's other things too. What what makes up that number?
So the Gensher actually is primarily for the facility projects that has facilitated. So there is a, within that big bond of the entire full face granted, there are three big portions. So one big portion is a mistip, which is a major street improvement program. And that is actually financed by the dedicated tax revenues that's on the mistip side. And then the other two side is the general county's facility needs as well as the event center capital. The event center capital is funded partially by T L T, a portion of the T L T that goes to W C B A. And then a portion of the county's resources, both from Gensher and general fund. And and then the remainder is actually all of the the theory of the facility capital that was invested in. Which was listed out back on slide thirteen. And that is partially funded by the debt service and partially funded by the facility capital dollars that has moved to facilities.
Okay, and I'm sorry if I didn't hear you say this, but why? Why the big jump there in twenty four twenty five?
Oh, that was just, that was a decision made at the time of the bonding. And it's honestly, there isn't a clear reason. Usually, usually it's tied with the cash flow that we have. And, you know, this is something that's not very conventional, and honestly, I don't have enough background to see why. They decided to schedule the payment schedule at that time, but that was a decision made at the time of the bonding.
So is that mandated, or is that just our projected numbers?
It's our projected numbers. And and if I, right, it's our, and every time we we go out for a bond, we actually work with our financial advisor to say. They will ask us, what what's your preferred length of payment? Do you want equal payments? Do you want like different payments based on your cash flow projections that's coming in? So I I have a feeling that that has something to do with anticipated less need in other areas toward the end of the Gensher life. But again, that's that's not something that's documented.
Isn't it related to the amount of time for the bond, the full faith and credit bond?
Actually, that is not entirely true. The fault, it's very complicated when we talk about that bond, it's funded by multiple funding sources. So Gensher is actually one of the funding sources that is going to end earlier than say general fund and T L T. So actually, the bond actually itself goes beyond twenty four twenty five.
Is this something that we should be considering refinancing? Is it too early? Is it too expensive? I mean, interest rates are pretty good right now, so.
Yep, and we do have a ten year prepayment clause where we cannot refinancing without penalty before the. The first ten years is up. I believe that one was back in twenty sixteen, so we're still a few years. Away from being able to refinance that particular bond. So by the time.
It was pretty new.
Yep, by the time it comes. When we hit that ten year mark, if we're still in a better interest environment, we will definitely look into that.
Bottom line, we still, through the projection of the gain share program between now and the end of fiscal year twenty five. There's approximately three point six million dollars that can be allocated per the board. For for utilization in combination with the remaining fund balance.
Correct.
Is it my understanding that we don't have a policy on how we allocate? Gain share? Is that? Am I understanding correctly?
So the past direction from the board, which is less than perfect, it's a it's an annual budget process, basically. It's presented as a one year budget plan for the Gensher, and then basically you only see this one column. In each year's budget, and then the board adopts a budget that's basically staff's cue to say, okay, that's the board's approval for that plan. And I think the benefit of this discussion, which is new as a process, is to basically give the board. Overall view of what are all the resources that's available, what are all the current need that is kind of programmed in. And allow the board to be able to. To make changes or not make changes based on a more strategic look to the end of life of Gensher.
So would it be here then if we were to recommend that, you know, because now the county. Has come a long way and has passed an equity resolution and is in full operation, and we kicked off our. Equity council, leadership council last week. When do we suggest, you know, applying an equity lens to gain share? Do we wait at the budget process, or is it in the creation of a policy?
That's that's actually an excellent point. That's something that staff can actually take as a feedback. But really, I think because this portion of the resource is very discretionary. So the current allocation or the current planned allocation is not really determined by staff either. I feel that it's always done in collaboration with the boards and board's direction. So it's.
I think your question needs to be reframed a little bit, Commissioner Phi, because the Equity Leadership Council is the internal group. So it's.
I I was using that to set the stage that we need to apply an equity lens, not that the county is in full operation of the equity resolution.
Right, right. I think process wise, what we're leading towards is that the council. The Advisory Council, the Advisory Committee on Racial Equity is the committee that we would ask. To be engaged on the equity lens use long term versus the internal committee. So this is where I totally, your question is resonating for me. But it does, to think about it from the standpoint of. The Internal Staff Equity Leadership Council, it puts staff in a bind. And so really, we're we're just trying to suss out board direction for the C A O. In terms of looking at all of our discretionary revenue.
Yeah, I think, yeah, sorry to confuse everyone. I was using as an example of the equity resolution being in full operation, not suggesting that this is something that the Equity Leadership Council takes on. I was just saying, you know, I think just creating a normal culture of where we apply an equity lens. From everything that, you know, all the, hopefully, all the decisions that we make here. And and just to starting that journey now is what I was, so yeah, sorry about the confusion, but I wasn't suggesting, Jack, to have equity leadership to it then.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi.
I have a question. Going back to the the comment about the. The desire to put the money into capital projects. It was there, I'm still confused as to whether or not there was an agreement with the state, if there was. If there was an expectation of the state, if that was self-imposed? I, you know, I just want to make sure I understand what the evolution of those, those decisions were. Because, you know, we're in a very different situation now, living through a pandemic and all the other pieces that we all live with every day. And I, you know, I just, and as well as the state legislature in a different world as well. So I'm just curious what the, what the parameters were.
I, I think from a legal perspective, there really isn't requirements on exactly what we have to spend the money on. And this is a very much discretionary, as Chair Harrington explained. Maybe Commissioner Rogers can speak to what, how that original decision was made.
Go ahead, Roy.
Yeah, it's always interesting. As, as they say, politics is making sausage, right? And there was a good deal of discussion. The current Senate President, who represents part of our, our, our area, at least my area that I represent, campaigned actively against the gain share last time. It feels that it's hurting other jurisdictions and it shouldn't continue. And so we were able to rally a bit of support by pointing to projects that were effective throughout the county, whether it be wingspan or the two point six million that got spread out pretty equally amongst four commissioner districts. And so it would come over to, for instance, if we're talking about District One, they'd be sitting there talking to Commissioner Phi and say, what are your priorities on about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? If, if you want to throw it back in the pot, and I'm not saying that's not what you can do, it's going to be very difficult. And I'm only talking with our lobbyists of the past, not the current, to go down straight faced and say, we want to take and have our own pot of money. We had problems when we gave money to schools, because as you know, the state formula is, is you give them money and they just get to count it against what the O D E Gism and far, as far as state basics. So we had to be very clever that we gave grants, trying to maneuver around that issue. I, I just see it's going to be open. And if I were in the state legislature, which I never chose to be, but if I was, I would have a real hard time giving Washington County any gain share if they were using it for services that were general services that the state fills anyway. I'd have a very hard time doing it. So we sold very hard our delegation, other than a couple we lost, but the rest of them, that we were doing projects that benefited the entire county. And there was, it was in the equity lenses you're talking about. We all drive on roads. We all walk on sidewalks. We all take paths. We said it's for everybody. And so the same thing with the event center, the same thing with a number of the projects that we were doing. So good discussion. I don't, I understand why you bring it up, but sometimes you, you open up a whole series of discussions that we've had before and they aren't pleasant. And everybody gets to thinking, can I claw back? They clawed back, as Jerry was pointing out, they clawed back a lot of money. There's no reason they couldn't claw the rest of the back. Because remember, the only thing that we did, we refused to give any property tax breaks for land and buildings. It was only on personal property taxes. That was all. And so when you take an Intel, for instance, most of their stuff is computer equipment and other interior improvements that they got, they got it on. There's no guarantee that we're going to get the hundred billion dollars. I mean, that was a future growth. They just said that they might, and it wouldn't be hard to go to Arizona, where they'll give them free land and no income taxes. So they could be going elsewhere. So we don't know the longevity. And to Jack, your question on the bonding, I don't remember every detail, but as I recall, Rob Master, who was involved at the time, wanted to see that these bonds were going to get paid down. And so they started ratcheting up with the bonding folks to get them paid down so that they wouldn't be a liability for future boards. Where they walked in, they said, we got no money. We got all this debt. What are we supposed to do? So that was part of the, the thought process. Now, I don't know if I answered it all or got to the, that was a thought.
My crystal ball tells me that no matter how we utilize the last few years of this gain share program, that it's going, it's at risk, no matter what, how we use the dollars. But you're right, there is no agreement that says you have to use it a particular way.
The other, the other, the other piece of this that we haven't really talked about is, is the employment numbers as a result of the, you know, the employment growth and, and, you know, the, the assessment of that piece as well.
So as a result of having the, the game share program in place and the income that's been supported as a result. And that's, that's the basis of gain share.
Exactly, exactly. So anyway, I'm just trying to understand if we were to make any changes, what the impact would be? And what our, you know, what our position is moving forward in relationship to the, the next three years.
Well, and I think from my standpoint, I don't think we're ready to throw in the towel yet on, there won't be any, an extension of, of gain share. I think game, the game share program itself has been hugely successful. And it's really, really hard to convince our legislators that, that there isn't state benefit from providing these tax incentives to corporations like Intel. I mean, Intel says for every job they create, there's three others created. So the domino effect is significant. And it's not hard to go out and to show X amount of dollars of income tax revenues that were paid as a result of these. And that was the deal that the jurisdictions were giving up some of their tax revenues so that the state overall could benefit. And they were just asking for a little bit of a crawlback. And yeah, I guess the real problem with it is it was, it was too successful. So at any rate, I'm not ready to give up on the fact that we can't continue to have conversations. And if there's opportunities for extending the gain share in some sort of a modified case, I, I think we're willing to have that conversation. So with that, want to be able to continue to point back and say that we actually did use an equity lens. We actually did do things for the good of the whole rather than just for good old Washington County's general fund. So I'd, I'd be real careful that we judiciously have this conversation and what we do with this money over the next four years.
I'm going to push back on this argument that using these dollars for our, for our chosen investments is not benefiting the whole county. I think that assertion has been made and repeated here. Putting money into programs and staff such as community corrections or juvenile justice or health and human services is countywide services and is as valuable as putting in capital. So I, I'm pushing back on the assertion that if you don't take gain share money and put it into capital, that it doesn't have countywide benefit.
Okay, so just let me expand that a little bit. I wasn't implying countywide benefit. I'm, I'm talking about statewide benefit. When we have an event center that invites people from outside the region, outside the state of Oregon, to come in to visit our wineries, visit our, our location. That's why Oregon is, and specifically the Portland area up until recently, was such a high growth area and a high attraction for the millennials and for our younger generation people to move here.
And I look forward to the event center business plan proving that out.
Well, that's what we all hope if we could get past this current situation. But, but it's just not the event center. I think it's a healthy environment for business and certainly for employment and for all of those good things that come about. And when you have that, it continues to domino and, and improve. So that's just, I, I, I know it's tempting and I completely, I hear what you're saying, Chair, especially in this environment, when we've got some hard decisions to make. I understand that. I just, I'm really, really cautious.
I think I'm really concerned that through the kind of budget cuts that we're going, that we're facing through this budget year, that by cutting back on things, including community corrections, that our community members are going to feel that effect. So not only are we having to lay off employees, which affects our economy, but also reducing services for the benefit of the community puts quality of life and public safety at risk. And so that's why I'm trying to be proactive in, in raising it now and looking under every seat cushion for options to navigate through that, through those conditions that I think could, could risk our quality of life, which we could hear from, from individual constituents as well as members of the business community. Commissioner Trese.
Thank you. I'm going back to page twenty-five. Jack, can you help there? And it's the game distribution.
Oh, you mean in the packet, page twenty-five?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant slide twenty-five, so I was a little confused.
Sorry about the numbering too. So it's, it's the game share distribution slide. And so it talks about Washington County getting nine million, City Hillsborough getting five, almost six million. And then there, there was money that went to E S P D and T V F and R and Urban Road Maintenance District, others. We didn't have any, how did they spend their money? I mean, that's just a question I have moving forward in relationship to capital versus operational versus all these other things. So, so there's a, if you add up all those numbers, including Metro underneath, it, it, you know, it, it adds, it adds up. So I'm just asking that question as well.
Well, so you're right that, that E S P D as a taxing district will continue to get the seventy-eight thousand dollars per year. And the U R M D as a taxing district will continue to get its fourteen thousand dollars per year. That's not what we consider as discretionary revenue for Washington County.
I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just contrasting what the, what they spend their money on versus what we allocate as our budget. So I'm just, I'm just raising a question here.
That's the problem. I'm, I don't quite follow the question.
Maybe I should go up and say, does this, to a larger number and say, to Commissioner Willie, does the city of, did the city of Hillsborough follow the same thought process in capital versus services?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I get, and I, I get what you're saying, Pam. Yeah, that we're, we're applying a certain methodology and unwritten policy to how we spend it, but we're not asking all of our partners out there that we shared the money with if they're doing the same thing.
And so that's my question, that it, is that it isn't a consistent, well, and when there isn't a policy, obviously, it doesn't even have the opportunity to be consistent.
Well, obviously, we can't be handing them a check and saying, this is what you got to do with it. But I can say that the city of Hillsborough had the same philosophy with their six million as we had with our nine million. But the other ones, I don't know that that question has ever been asked.
And I'm just, I'm just looking at the picture from a, a higher altitude level.
Well, and this goes to the relationship between the S I P agreement allows for the, the Special Tax Authority. So they, all those districts were foregoing that additional tax. What this gain share allows is the capturing of some of that loss, and that's where the dollars in the table come in.
I get that. I'm just looking at, at the whole picture, but thank you.
So it's a, it's a loss of discretionary revenue. And then each taxing authority gets to decide how to use that regained discretionary revenue. You're right about that. So I'm just, you know, ensuring that we have the visibility to have the discussion about looking at community needs as opposed to just being totally excited about what, you know, Washington County, we like to build stuff. That's all, to put it real pointedly. And I hear that Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Rogers are comfortable with moving forward with what has been the status quo in looking at the capital investments. And I'm not for that.
And I, I, I guess, I'm on to make sure that I communicate the right message. I completely understand your point of view on this. And I am not totally opposed to that. I just want us to make, to understand why philosophically we have made those decisions in the past and that there is a purpose. And we might want to consider carrying on that purpose if there would be any future gain share opportunities. So I'm, I'm more than willing to have this conversation during the budget season and, and all these other kinds of things. I, I'm, I'm just saying, I also am pretty firmly attached to the prior philosophy on where we spent this money.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful. Because what it says is, we can't provide the C A O with absolute direction for the use of that three point six million dollars once again for I T S capital and road capital. That's all.
I appreciate this discussion. It's been very helpful for me to, to, to look at this and to, to consider what, you know, what our history has been, what our future is going to be, and what we, we choose to make our history. So, but my, my second question is really to Tanya. Is the lack of a, a, a guidance here going to be a problem for you?
Well, I think we're at the crux of practice versus policy. And this conversation has been, what has been the practice in Washington County versus, which has, has led itself to staff following that as policy. So I do think in the future, it is important we do come back to a policy discussion. Given this discussion of the board and the reality that just this week is the deadline for departments to submit their budget request. So there are glimmers of information that you have received so far, such as the challenges in community corrections. And it is important that I present a balanced budget to the board for consideration. Jack and I do that. And so notwithstanding, this conversation may come back as we look at the tools in the toolbox. So I, and I'm not, when I indicate this, I'm not nodding my head to a certain direction. I'm just indicating we need to use all the tools in the toolbox to ensure that we are serving our community because this is a cut budget overall, even though you will be presented with a budget that will have certain growth areas, such as the support of housing services.
Yeah, my, my final comment, Jerry, you, you fairly well expressed my thoughts as well. But we can always revisit things. It's just very cautiously do that. The last time we tried to be a little clever was when we made distributions to school districts. They thought we were wonderful. Lo and behold, in the next session, guess what happened? They capped it at sixteen million. And so we've seen what happens when we start doing allocations elsewhere. So I, I, it might work. I have no idea. You might be a hundred percent right. But if they come back and chop another half of it off of it, then I, 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 I tend to worry. I, I don't like poking the bear unless I know what the bear's going to do. And that's, that's my, that's my fear. That's it.
Chair, I want one other comment, though. I, I wasn't quite done. From a financial policy standpoint, I think we need to walk in eyes wide open with what I'll call one-time versus ongoing funding sources. And at any point in time, there is sunsets on the funding sources that needs to be clearly identified. So if the board would determine to use one, in essence, when I look at the list overall, there are more so one-time funding sources in gain share, it just has to be an eye, eyes wide open discussion.
Well, if I could just ask this, Tanya, the. Well, if I could just ask this, uh, Tanya, the, um, I would like to see, and maybe you're going to do this anyway, I would like to see uh, a proposed, not a proposed budget, just kind of a draft. But it's gotta show me, um, what, what we would love to have, not, not aspirational and not all the things that we want, but kind of to sustain some things and how much the shortfall is to the reality of things. So when we start talking about other pockets of, of money, um, we know full well what it is that we're doing and how much we really need to do that. I mean, we've certainly had conversations about L U T. We hear about our juvenile system and everything else. Uh, I think we'd all love to say, we need to at least fix that to a minimum level. What is that? And, um, and then to me, we can start having conversations about, I don't know, maybe it's a one-time ask of gain share money. Um, I don't know, but I just need to know what that number is. Um, and then make sure that we have, as, as you say, Chair, we've, we've gone through the couch and looked for all the, the change that's left in there. And, uh, and again, I, I just, for me, I need to have a very complete big picture and, um, and know what that shortfall is.
So the budget direction that we've given the departments is to submit their budget summits, achieving the targets that Jack and team have provided to the departments. In addition, we are also asking, given you submitted your budget reaching to this target, what are the items that you have had to cut? I E. services that will no longer occur or service reductions. And so that information will be provided to the board um, so that it can be a eyes wide open conversation. Because there is some information you have to date, I E. community corrections, you mentioned juvenile detention, but that you can see Washington County as a one county, what, what those service reductions or cuts are as well as some requests for, I'll call it expansion of service because true, true demonstr, demonstrated community need that departments are expressing.
I think this has been a very useful conversation, uh, and is also helping us each figure out and provide information to the C A O to let her know what we're going to need to see in the budget summary document. In terms of identifying, clearly identifying the revenue sources and the impacts to the, uh, direction that has been given by the C A O and the, the C F O in providing their proposal and what that truly means in terms of, you know, not doing certain capital projects, delaying capital projects, you know, the, or the programming of capital projects, like, you know, we're not gonna move forward with the, the design and discovery phase for a few, future capital project or cut back in services or so forth. So, uh, it will mean that we may have more pages to the, the summary budget to read. But that's what we need in order to come, go through the decision-making uh, to come to a, a final budget that we feel good about approving in a difficult situation. You know, our property taxes haven't kept pace irrespective of having a pandemic, as well as modernizing needs. So it's a hard situation.
Well, and that's been, that's been my mantra for several years, even as mayor, that our revenue stream and the property taxes, um, is not, cannot sustain the increased demand on services that we have to provide. So at some point in time, we're gonna have to have a harder conversation.
Yep.
Yep.
Cool.
All right. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much for fostering the conversation through this topic. Really appreciate it. Good job. Alrighty, we have one last topic, right on time at 4:30. Clean water services, energy strategy update. Turn it over to you, Ms. Taniguchi Dennis, and your team led by Nate Cullen.
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to see in the view if we can see Nate. Nate, are you online? I see Mark. So maybe we might need Clerk Moss to, um, bring Nate into the meeting. Uh, we can barely hear you. Yep.
We need to get Nate one of these cool little speakers.
Yeah. Okay, Nate.
Okay, uh, good afternoon. First of all, can't hear me. Oh, my goodness.
Can't hear you, Nate.
I'm gonna try to figure out this audio. I can hear you great. Yeah, we can't.
How is it for everybody else? Not so good. Okay.
Let me try again. Can you hear me now? I'm getting as close as I can to the, no.
I could only because I turned my volume up way high.
Okay. I've got maximum volume.
Well, we may need you to talk into your mic as opposed to your screen.
I apologize. I'm trying to figure out a way to change this. Can you hear me better now?
That was a little worse. You might just need to really project your voice, Nate.
Wow, um, I really apologize. I'm having I can hear you perfectly and
Diane, Nate, I would maybe suggest, um, Nate calling in. That may be better.
Yes.
As an option.
I don't see a call-in number.
There we go. Um.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by term. You have not entered any number. Please re-enter your meeting ID, followed by term. You have not entered any number. Please re-enter your meeting ID, followed by term.
What do you say, Commissioners? We hang out for another five minutes and then call it a day?
Hey, Mark. I, I emailed you a question. If you can answer that, then I'll try and call him in with the dialer.
I'll try that.
Is this information time critical, Diane?
No, um, we could, um, reschedule it. Um, Nate was really wanting to talk to the board about the update of his, uh, request for, um, information and then to, um, talk to the board about moving forward in working with Northwest Natural Gas. So the team did a really good job and they were really hoping to, um, brief the board. But, um, if we can't get him on in, in another minute or so, I, I, I do think we should probably reschedule. And I do apologize for having one of those technical difficulty days, it looks like.
So I forwarded the number to Michael, who's gonna try to call him directly and get him online. I, I appreciate your patience. I'm sorry, we don't have like a halftime show or something. Entertain people while we're waiting. Yes, there we go. There we go.
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Nate.
Give him a movement break.
Oh, there's a phone there.
That's Nate.
Okay.
All right. Hello, can you possibly hear me?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to, uh, shut your
Computer.
It's not one thing, it's another. So I'm sorry.
Or Nate's had, uh, this challenge before, so, um, I think we need to call it a day. I think, uh, we're, we've been pretty patient in terms of trying to get this solved today, so, um.
Oh, my.
I think we've exhausted all possible solutions at this stage.
And it's been a long day today, so we'll, um, reschedule the item and, um, I, um, appreciate the board for, um, your patience and your indulgence as we're trying to figure out our tech problem, but, um, I think you're right, Chair. So
Don't worry, Nate, we're still totally into the topic.
Yeah, it's a great topic. Yeah, it's a great presentation.
Diane, there are, was there three recommendations? I just passed two. Oh, there's two recommendations. Um, I mean, are we, by not having this conversation, are we going to hold up um, decisions on these recommendations, or is this gonna be okay? Because, I mean, I can, we could, we could all kind of weigh in if there's, we, we can certainly go through the slide presentation ourself again and, um, and respond with questions or whatever the case is, if there's something that's time sensitive.
That's a good question. Thank you, um, Jerry, um, for that. And really what the team wanted to be able to do is to resume their conversations with Northwest Natural Gas to talk about renewable natural gas. And if they're successful and making some progress, they would return to the board for an update.
So I, we appreciate your patience on that, and I think that's a great summary by Diane. We talked to you in December about the R F I process. Uh, what Nate was hoping to do today is bring back kind of where we are now, because it is, it's a different type of, uh, contracting purchasing process. And to start moving into that with some of these negotiations with Northwest Natural and some of that discussion. So we can, we will definitely be back to you with that particular action as well.
Good comment, Nate. Uh, very creative. I like it. It, uh, thoughtful. Once again, you're being very thoughtful. So I don't know why you couldn't just carry forward and, and come back with where you're at. I, I, I don't see any impediment, in my mind, maybe somebody else does, but, uh, I think it's a very good approach.
Well, I just wanna thank the board for your patience and time this afternoon and, uh, certainly we'll let you go, so I will turn it back to the chair.
I don't know about being let go, per se.
We're letting, yeah, I should be careful.
So Commissioners, uh, we haven't had the sake of this presentation, uh, I know I'm going to want at least a Commissioner briefing before I'm willing to authorize any contracts or commitments to develop an informal strategic partnership for investigating a larger scale opportunity. So um, the team will have to put its hat off and figure out how to go about, um, taking us through this appropriately. It sounds like maybe two Commissioners don't need it. That's fine. But there's three more of us that can decide what we want. So. Okay. Alrighty, great. Does anyone else have anything for the good or the order today? We certainly covered a gamut of topics, so, uh, seeing not, nothing more. Uh, we'll adjourn today's work session of March 2nd, uh, 2021. Happy March. See you Thursday. Bye.